We can begin demolition, right?
I guess so, yeah.
They said once they get turned in, they could schedule it.
Yeah, the mayor began telling me that I had to shut down my two rooms.
Six o'clock. Right? Yep. All right, let's get this show on the road. Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening, everybody. All right, pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been published in the Burlington County Times and Courier-Post on the 16th day of November 2025, and published in the Pine Barrens Tribune on the 14th day of November 2025. Additionally posted on the official bulletin board of the township of Pemberton on the 13th day of November 2025, those wishing to be notified of changes to scheduled meetings were notified via email or regular mail. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Doyle?
Here.
Mr. Dewey?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Bianchini?
Here.
All right, meetings now called to order. Closed session resolution number 303 2025 authorizes council to go into closed session. We have no need to go into closed session tonight, so we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Ward, we'll start with you.
Thank you. So the comments I have for everybody this evening are off-topic to the agenda. And if you allow me to permit me, I have a couple of statements to make. Number one, I was asked by a member of this council to resign. Now, I'm not going to go further into that statement any more than I have to. I'm not going to identify the council member in question. But I've sat up here for three years now. I have poured my heart and soul personally into this process. During that three years, I've had, with the help of Councilman Dewey, we've implemented a lot of great movements in this township in regards to the Agriculture Advisory Committee, the Business and Economic Development Committee, as well as many, many more things for this township. And I have listened to everybody and have given everybody an ear and a compassionate shoulder to come and talk to me. The three Democrats that used to sit up here next to me and Councilman Dewey during those two years that we sat here never asked me to resign. We had our differences. But never once was I told insultingly that I need to resign because I don't care about this community. I don't put my personal needs first when I sit on this dais. I put my townspeople first when I sit on this dais. I'm going to read a statement. It's probably about 100 years old. "Since its very outset, it has been found necessary to conduct our government by means of political parties. That system would not have survived from generation to generation if it had not been fundamentally sound and provided the best instrumentalities for the most complete expression of the popular will. It is not necessary to claim that it has always worked perfectly. It is enough to know that nothing better has been devised. No one would deny that there should be full and free expression and opportunity for independence of action within the party. There is no salvation in a narrow and bigoted partisanship. But if there is to be responsible party government, the party label must be something more than a mere device for securing office. Unless those who are elected under the same party designation are willing to assume sufficient responsibility and exhibit sufficient loyalty and coherence so that they can cooperate with each other in the support of the broad general principles of the party platform, the election is merely a mockery. No decision is made at the polls, and there is no representation of the popular will of the people. Common honesty and good faith with the people who support a party at the polls requires that party, when it enters office, to assume the control of that portion of the government to which it has been elected and nothing more. Any other course is bad faith and a violation of party pledges." That was from Calvin Coolidge's inauguration speech in 1938. A great man. A very silent man, I may add, that listened and paid attention. That's all I have to say. And if anybody in this room thinks I should resign because I don't have your best interests in mind, I'll listen to the people in the seats, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Doyle?
Good evening, everybody. I've found that while most of the people do like the comments from council in the beginning, I kind of find it hard to come up with my own because I usually try to feed off of the public and how the feel is for the evening, the comments that are brought up to the podium and everything. So the only thing I really want to say is I hope everybody has a very safe and very happy Thanksgiving, and we will see you in December.
Councilman Dewey?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Hope we can get all of our work done here that we got in front of us tonight for the meeting that got postponed. Apologize for that. I wasn't up to being able to do it. It got postponed and they scheduled it for tonight, so we'll try to get everything accomplished here tonight. On the same thing, I'd like to make sure everybody has a great Thanksgiving, and I will see you in December. Thank you.
I guess this is the night of keeping things short. Unfortunately, I was out of town, so I didn't have a lot of time. Just thank you, everybody, for coming out. Last week, we had a Veterans Day service up there. I was thankful for the people that turned out to that, even though the weather was a little chilly. It was good to see the people come out and respect the veterans and stuff. Yep, I hope we have a pleasant Thanksgiving and look forward to seeing you in the first meeting in December. Thank you.
All right. So just so everybody's clear, the meeting was postponed till today because we didn't have a quorum to have the meeting last week. There's no conspiracy there. We weren't trying to slip something into the agenda. It's strictly because we did not have a quorum. Just one announcement, the Boy Scouts are juke 397, they're having a pie sale on November 25th and 26th. Local delivery, and it's going to be at the Old World Bakery. Did they leave any of these back? These flyers are in the back of the room, so that's all I got for comments. And to piggyback on the other councilmen, I hope you all have a safe and happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December. All right, let's start with public comments. December 3rd, yeah.
Marty Wenger, 1502 South Lake Shore Drive. I just bought the house. My closing moments attempt. So, good evening, town council members, residents, and mayor. My name is Marty Graff-Wenger, and I have the privilege of serving as the president of the Browns Mills Improvement Association, the BMI-A. I'm excited to take this opportunity to talk about our upcoming initiatives and events. Firstly, I want to remind everyone, not just our members, about our next meeting scheduled for Sunday, November 23rd at 2:00 p.m. This meeting is not only for a regular agenda, but also includes an exciting event, the Great Berry Bake Off. You do not need to be a member to participate in this contest, so we invite all community members to join us and showcase your baking skills. Bring along the baked goods, and let's have some fun. Our talents will be judged by culinary instructor John Maki and his talented students from the Pemberton Township High School. We have wonderful prizes for the top three places, including cash and, of course, the coveted bragging rights. I'm also thrilled to announce another event happening on December 5th, which is a Friday night at 7:00 p.m., our very own Gen X 80s dance party. We encourage everyone to come dressed as if they're stepped right out of the 80s. I know that I will. Hopefully, we'll see some fun outfits, and of course, BMI-A members get free food at this and every Front Friday event. Membership is only $15 per family per year, so why not join today? I always have membership cards with me. Additionally, the BMI-A is collecting warm fuzzy blankets for the coupon clip-it clubs toy drive. Please bring your blanket donation to any of our events, or you can text me at 609-388-1305, and I will send one of our elves to do a porch pickup. Your contributions will help keep families warm during this cold season. Furthermore, I'm incredibly proud to announce the BMI-A's Make It Again Meals Initiative, which I have props for. Make It Again Meals, okay? So during these challenging times, ensuring that every family has access to nutritious meals is crucial. We've developed meal kits like Chicken Alfredo and Cheesy Chicken and Rice Soup that are affordable with ingredients available at your nearest Dollar Tree or Walmart. Each recipe costs under $10 and can feed up to eight people. If you are able to organize a bag of ingredients along with the recipe card, we would greatly appreciate it. Please bring it to the November 23rd meeting at a BMI-A building located at 40 Arbutus Street. There might be folks there who need a meal, and it would be wonderful to provide them with this nourishment. And I have one with me, so I'm going to show what it looks like. So, the recipe card is in the front, and we just fill the bag up with these shelf-stable ingredients, and then they can just pick this up, and they have a meal at their house. So, the recipe cards are available with me tonight. We currently have 15 different recipes, and I'd be happy to share these cards with anyone interested in helping us. More recipes are coming in every single day, so we'll be working on this initiative for a long time to come. It's a wonderful way to support our community. We will also be sharing our Make It Again Meals Initiative with local food banks in the town, such as the Christian Caring Center and the Methodist Church. Depending on how many donations we receive, we could really end up providing a significant number of meals to those in need. Finally, we will have the bags available at the coupon clip-it clubs toy drive for families to take with them on December 13th and 14th. Our strong belief is that we should not only provide shelf-stable ingredients to folks in this time of need, but also a way for them to recreate these meals for less than the cost of going to McDonald's and a lot healthier, too. So, thank you so much for your continued support, and I look forward to seeing you all at the next couple of events. Let's keep working together to make a positive impact. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, I have a question for Marty, if I could ask her why she's here. Marty? Marty? I was going to send you an email, but I figured I'd ask you since I was going to see you tonight. How is your situation with being able to get the BMI-A building?
I mean, you mean the loft?
I mean, the building in general, the loft, everything.
Oh, yeah. We have access to the building. We were just there for a board meeting, and everything was okay, but no loft access, so I think we'll have to wait that out. We had been invited to take part in a it's a funding, like a free funding, I forget what they call that, but, you know, where people give us money to do record storage, digitizing records.
Fundraiser?
Yeah. It's not a fundraiser, it's like a grant. We have been invited to take part in a grant where we can take all of our records, which go back more than 100 years, and a digitizing committee would come in there and do that for us. But we have to have access to a filing cabinet to put our things in, and we just don't have the room for that. So we might have to hold off doing that for another year. And the problem with that is that the records are in a closet all the way in the bottom, and they're not really in a safe spot for that, so.
And as far as getting the building on the dates that you request, no issues with that?
No issues with that whatsoever. The rest of the downstairs of the building, no issues with that at all.
Okay.
Yeah, the loft is something we might have to push a year, you know, to make some progress on that. We did have access to the loft, especially, I grew up in that building, so I know that, because we used to watch movies in there, and we had access to loft. And that's where Santa Claus would come and visit the BMI-A every year, and Santa Claus would have a room up there, you know, to
I remember.
prepare. And so it's been closed off to us since the remodeling of the building, so we're interested in having that back. We have very big events now with a lot of event materials, and the small closet is really not sufficient for us anymore.
Understood.
But thank you for asking.
I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Deborah Skipper, Pineview Terrace. One thing I've gotten very, or Maria, and also I believe we both have, we've really gotten very, I won't say proficient, in this tax sales that go on in the township. The township used to do them in-house, and now they are doing them with a company out of Michigan called Real Auctions. I know our township workers are extremely overworked right now with a smaller staff, but I'm not sure why we don't do the auctions in-house. If you'll look at the list that I gave you, I was fortunate enough, between Shayla and Real Auctions in Michigan, they were able to walk me through on how to get the last in April, winning bids of the properties in town. I think there's 1,900 of them. If you look at the names, they're all foreign companies. And learning about tax sales, you start on an interest that's 18% and you bid downward. Once you get to zero, then you pay a premium. So in other words, you're paying more than what the taxes are, water or sewer. If you look at some of these premiums, there's been 51,000, 30,000, 20,000, 1,500. To me, it looks like it's a great, great way to move some money around, and whether it be laundering or pushing it to another year for taxes. But it's a shame that we've let other countries come in and purchase up our, well, not yet purchase, but bid on our properties, because it takes about two years if it's not paid off. It would really be nice if we could look into keeping it back into our township and giving a chance to our local, younger people, homeowners or renters who want to own a home or want to own a piece of property, to keep it local, not I hope you take a moment and look at these. It's really, it's really quite embarrassing. So anyway, I'm hoping that the council will take a look at that. My other concern is our insurance issues, or should I say, lack of insurance issues? I have heard that the township will be covered by JIF till the first 12. They will stay with the insurance companies, and they will insure the township along with the other, what, 29 or 28 or whatever is townships. But Jack is no longer going to be insured as of the 1st of the year. I hope that you're looking into him driving the township vehicles, acting in any manner that represents the township in any capacity without insurance. Ask him to sign an indemnification letter, anything. I'm sure the attorneys are looking into it, but I think as a township, we don't need to be liable for any of his actions. If he was going to try and purchase his own employee practice liability, the cost would be astronomical with his background and the lawsuits. It would personally bankrupt him. I hope that the council attorneys are looking into this and at the bylaws and to neutralize his authority on him. You are looking into that? Wonderful. And I hope that he's not driving any of our township vehicles, or he shouldn't even really even be signing anything after the 1st of the year representing us. I have to sign in. Thank you.
Jack, with regards to the tax sales, why do we not keep them local for the tax sale?
I believe it's state law, and I think the reason they do them electronically is because it's cheaper that way. They've been doing it that way for quite a few years, and I think it was motivated because of the cost.
Cheaper, yes. But, you know, and no, it's not a state law. A lot of towns do do it themselves. Real Auctions only does, I think, five or six states. And again, it's because it's easier. Tax sales are really shady. They're really quite shady. When you go in there, 8:00 is when the auction's supposed to end. We signed in at quarter of. It's already done. It's all done with algorithms. It's all done with, by other foreign companies. So there's no auction going on. It's all set and done before 8:00 even hits.
So what you're saying is there's no, nobody would have vested interest
None.
purchasing any of the properties.
Well, you know something? Yes, I'm going to take that back. If you, if you look at this list of 1,900 people, I think there's like four or five that did pay a percentage, and when you look them up, it's because they're purchasing up a small little sliver of land that's next to them. So it'd be a homeowner or whatever, where nobody else would have an interest in it, whether it be a buildable lot or whatnot. But there's very few interests. But they do start at 18%. You bid downward, and then it goes up the other way, which seems a little sketchy to me. And I understand that's how Jersey City really got into a lot of problems also, because there was a lot of money laundering and money pushing through, and really did shut down Jersey City years ago.
And I mean, I know when I first came to town, coming to a live auction here, I don't remember exactly when it was, but I don't know if it was a tax sale or just a property sale, but it was a sale going on for properties. I don't recall all the details, but it was done in person, so.
It may have been a sheriff's sale.
No, the sheriff's sales aren't held at this building. The actual land sales are when we do actually have land sales. They are conducted in this room.
In here.
Not, not the tax sale, the actual land sales.
I will say that Shayla was just very informative, and also Real Auctions out in Michigan, they couldn't have been nicer in helping us navigate the website and finding out the information that we did. It's a little, it's really kind of scary.
You know, Ms. Skipper, it's funny that you're saying this because, you know, I don't like to speak too much when, when you hear rumors, but I had heard that when the last warehouse was built, that a previous employee of this town, who again shall remain anonymous, because again, rumors are rumors, that some new LLCs popped up under their name. And I'd be curious to see if any of these would have anything to do with them. A lot of LLCs on here.
Well, the problem is, is that, I'm sure the attorneys can tell you this, last, last year, last December, all LLCs under Fensin were supposed to be registered with the state. You were going to be fined. In fact, I think I sent you the paper and Danny the papers and whatnot to make sure you're registered. And there was a lawsuit from some LLCs out of Houston, Texas, and they got it overturned, which is a shame, because that just tells you right there, what are you hiding? You know, I have nothing to hide on my LLC. Neither do you, or you, or, you know, it's, the whole thing's real sketchy. And then when you look at some of these other companies, all these tax lien funds, tax lien funds, when you look them up, they're not locally based. They're, they're China, they're, they're everywhere. When a house over on Circle Drive goes up for tax sale and the total taxes on, I think it was, and water and sewer was like, I want to say $8,000 or something, and they bid a premium of $51,000. It kind of tells you something. So, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
And just a, on a side note, with the coming up auction we have going on, I don't know where we stand with that, but I understand one of the prime properties has a potential sale going on, and I don't know if that property should come off the list so not mess up the potential sale. I understand that the county, it was filed a possible, you know, somebody's interested in buying it. So I know, I know council doesn't have the authority to pull the properties off and all, but just a suggestion, I can tell you which one it is afterwards if you want.
Marie Reynolds, Browns Mills, hi.
Josh.
I like your personality. I think, I think we have a good blend. I like the quiet man, because I know you roar when you have to. So, don't take it personally. Yeah, I'm, I agree with Debbie about the tax sales. We've been mired in it, looking at the situation with the tax sales. And honestly, when I, how it impacts me as a resident of Browns Mills and my little development, three of my neighbors got their first homes through the tax sale years ago. Best neighbors you'd ever want to have, still have, but that's how they, that's how they were able to buy their first home, was, you know, through a tax sale, waiting the two-year period, paying the taxes and keeping them straight, and then foreclosing and going through that entire process. But they became wonderful homeowners and wonderful neighbors. So I really think we lose something when we outsource stuff to god knows who. And in that, in that, in that vein, Sycamore Hall, and I know you're tired of hearing about it, and I, I, I can't, I won't stop, I won't stop. We are now incorporated as, with the state of New Jersey, as Save Sycamore Hall, a nonprofit organization. Our mission is to see that Sycamore Hall is developed according to redevelopment plans in the township, that it's preserved as much as possible, that it's, that it's, we try to maintain its integrity no matter what happens to it. And in that vein, it is on the tax sale for next week's tax sale. It's listed for over $10,000 in back taxes. The last time taxes were paid on Sycamore Hall was in 2019, just before the township bought it. Now, the present owners have had it for two years. They didn't pay anything in 2024, and that's the only thing that will appear on that tax sale, because you can only go a year back, as I understand it. And please, jump in if I'm wrong, if I'm, my understanding is wrong on any of this. But, so, so what happens now? If someone purchases that, pays the taxes over the $10,000, and if they pay a premium for it, whatever, however, they, they win it in the tax sale next week. So they have to, for the next couple of years, they have to, for the next year, they have to pay the, they pay that $10,000, then they have to keep the taxes and any other bills with the township up to date for the following year, for 2025, which they've not paid a cent now for two years, mind you. So then they have to keep the taxes up. Then they can begin a foreclosure process. After the second year, they can begin foreclosure, is my understanding at any rate. So during that time, the current owners, they're off the hook now. They haven't done a thing there. They don't have to do a thing, because their taxes are paid, nobody's bugging them, they can do whatever they've been doing, which is nothing. So so for two years, the building sits and degenerates, as it has been. But in the meantime, when they go to foreclosure, this is what they have to pay. Before, before anybody could foreclose on it, they have to pay the $240,000, $270,000 mortgage to Delaware Valley Sickle Cell Anemia. They have to pay another mortgage to Delaware Valley Sickle Cell Anemia for $480,000, that's outstanding. They have to pay a mortgage to First Platinum Capital Corporation in Boca Raton, which claims every piece of property in that building and on that property for, in exchange for an assignment of leases and rents that was signed. They have to pay $880,000 They have to pay $880,000, also to First Platinum Capital Corporation of Boca Raton, another mortgage filed with the Burlington County Board of Taxation. And last week, I found a notice of settlement that was filed with the county, that they settled with, sorry, SNJ Property Management LLC out of Jersey City, New Jersey. There's nothing in the notice of settlement, other than a statement that notices hereby given of a contract agreement of sale between the parties herein. The land to be affected is commonly known as One Clubhouse Road. So this is a notice of settlement, which my understanding is that in some cases, for legal reasons, some will, someone will post a notice of settlement in order to prevent additional liens being placed on the property. So if, but maybe it's legitimate. Maybe they did really settle in June. And if they did, then let them sell it, and maybe we can deal with the next person. Because I, I would ask that you take it off, I mean, my request is that you would take it off the tax sale list if you could, because otherwise, we're looking at another two years of nothing done, absolutely nothing being done there. Thank you.
So Marie, what you're saying is, according to my math, they've borrowed over $1.6 million on that property and haven't done a thing to it? Okay.
I guess there's a next step is bankruptcy for that company?
Well, I don't, I don't know if the previous, she's saying that somebody owned it after, after the contract.
Good evening, council. You know how we like to roll? We like to jump right into the agenda. I have a question for 306, 2025. My question is, what will be the expected service life, service life of this new vacuum truck that we are going to be possibly purchasing tonight? And will this be replacing a vacuum truck that we have on the fleet now? Or are we going to be adding to the fleet? 308, 2025, my question is, how much is the contract going to be? 309, 2025, my question is, what is the original amount and why do we need the increase? Did the original contract not foresee future costs and anticipate it? 312, 2025, my question is, what property is being disposed of for auction? And from 317 down to 323, I would say do a consent, because these people have clearly not heeded the warnings. I'm sure they've received probably two or three warnings that they've needed to correct issues in the mail from the township. Seeing that their properties are on here now means that they have not heeded the warnings. So we have to follow through with the punishment, which is putting a lien on their property. 324, 2025, would we be able to discuss any of the details of the agreement if we are New purchases, I said yes to every single one. They all are needs that we need to be able to meet for each of the departments. Public Works definitely needs their, their items here, because these are very important to keep systems functioning. Said yes to the special use permit for the Boy Scouts of America Troop 22G for the winter wreaths. Number 12, my question is, how much is the bill list? And I wanted to also just say thank you to Amy and Sunshine for putting the bill list on the township website. They have three up so far, and if you just click on the government tab and go over to minutes and ordinances, just click that, and you'll see bill lists on the township website, something that we have been pushing for, for quite some time. And I'm glad to say that they are up on the township website for everyone here to be able to enjoy. And I have a few comments and questions of my own, the best part of the entire meeting for all of you. My question is, have the issues of the comp time, flex time been addressed or resolved by the Labor Council since our last meeting? I know you're now a secondary fill-in attorney, so I don't know if you would be able to have that answer on file. My second question is, what is the timeframe to get a vote on a resolution to get on the 2026 ballot? A special question, if the public votes in favor of, to change this form of government? My third question is, what is the status of hiring a business administrator? My fourth question is, have the budget discussions begun as pursuant to the New Jersey Revised Statute Title 40- Municipalities and Counties, Section 40, colon, 69A, dash, 45? Little statement here, our Christmas tree lighting is on the 6th of December at 6:00. Please show up a little early so you can get parking, because I'm sure it's going to be a packed event. Another question I have is, have any plans begun for America's 250th birthday? And are there any plans to have it in collaboration with the Water Carnival for the, for a fun-filled day to celebrate our country and our town's deep, rich cultural history? And I'm under, now understanding, because I saw on the Facebook for the recreation, we moved Mr. Brunson from the Senior Center to the Nesbit Center. Would we be able to elaborate on administration side of, how long did you guys come to the conclusion of needing to move the office at least one year to the date from last time we had to move from the municipal building to the Senior Center? And that's it. Everyone have a great and happy Thanksgiving. Don't talk about politics, because you might get your crazy uncle, who might throw some bread at you if you upset him.
Alex, you need a hobby.
I do.
So just a few questions, if I may ask. Amy, you put the whole, the whole bill list is on the website already?
Well, there's only three.
No, there is currently three up. We have to go through a period of redacting some of them. From here on out, the bill list will be done with the idea that they are going to be put up on the website.
Okay.
When there's certain bills regarding medical testing-
I understand. Okay.
-stuff like that, that needs to be redacted on the old ones, and that is being worked on.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So from here on out, the current ones are being constructed, so that information is already not on there. Can Amy speak into the microphone? You can't hear her.
Sorry. The bill lists are being worked on, and the ones moving forward will no longer be constructed in a way where we would have to do any redaction unless the council removes a bill from the bill list. We already have, we are going through the past ones for this year. They will be redacted and hopefully up shortly. It's just a time-consuming process.
All right.
Bill list, 7.3 million.
7.3? All right.
I rounded up.
Can I take some of the easy ones?
No.
Okay.
Well, actually, if you could clarify, service life on the jetpack, that's 10 years?
Fifteen, they estimate, but if you take care of it, it could last 20 years.
Go ahead, Harry, do your thing.
So that's for that one. On, let's see, 308, Alex, you wanted to know what the total cost of that?
Uh, yeah, how much the contract?
For 309, the increase was due to increased use. We brought a couple wells back online that were out of service, so they needed additional chemicals to treat those wells. That's why the increase. The price is still the same per gallon, just we're using a little more of it. And they're, they're easy ones.
The next one was 312. What property is being disposed of for auction?
Oh, yeah, that's old used equipment, very old trucks, cars, some office furniture, stuff like that, you know? One fire truck, an old fire truck, yeah. It's all, all old equipment, yeah. I, I don't know if that's on, is that on the website yet, Jack? Is there a list of pieces?
Um, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's on NJ.gov's website, because it's coming up, yeah, so you can go on and look at every piece if you want, yeah.
324, are we able to talk about any of the details in the agreement, or is that off limits?
Take too long.
Just some of the highlights? Any notable highlights?
It's an acceptable agreement to the township.
It extends an existing agreement with some renegotiation.
All right. And have we, I don't know if you'd be able to get back to us on that, the comp time, flex time issue?
So I'd have to speak to the labor attorney, but I can get back to you on December 3rd.
All right. Thank you. And do we know what a timeframe is to get a vote on a resolution or ordinance to get on the next ballot for '26?
I don't want to speak out of turn, but I believe Chris was going to have something for us in the December meetings. So, yeah, we'll, we'll take it from there, once Chris gets it to us and we can start the motions and stuff. But we're looking to start it in December sometime.
All right. What about the budget? Have the budget discussions begun?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good.
They have.
Are they looking good, the numbers?
They're just compiling everything now. Way too early.
Way too early? All right. Are any of you guys coming to the Christmas tree lighting?
Of course.
Oh, good. What about plans for America's 250th birthday and the Water Carnival?
Jack, anything on that?
I've coordinated with our historic commission, and they've been talking with the rec department, trying to get some things together.
Can you speak into the microphone? What?
I've coordinated with our historic commission, and they're coordinating with the rec department to work together. Our rec department is actually thinking about maybe a week-long type of thing, different events scattered throughout the week. But it's still early, they're still planning on what they want to do.
All right. And the Nesbit Center, what came across, what came about moving them again?
We had, we were leasing the property out to a county early education thing, I believe it was.
The daycare?
Yeah. They, they canceled the lease because of lack, lack of funding. So that building's been sitting empty, and if you know anything about buildings, you don't want them sitting empty for any amount of time. Our rec director went over, looked at the building, and really liked it, and thought it would fit his needs. At one time, I believe many, many years ago, our rec department was in that building before. So he asked if he could move in there and establish the rec department in that building, and I gave the approval.
All right. Well, thank you. And did you get all your Christmas decorations up?
Don't worry, Mr. Ward, we'll help you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mike, how are you?
Good. How's it going? Mike Sokka, 92 Scrape Town Road. So I'm going to start off with some financial questions, and then go into your processes here, which could get you in some big trouble very soon with the Government Records Council. All right. Mike Sokka, so I'm going to start off with some financial questions, just to see if we're being diligent and actually not wasting our money. And then I'm going to talk to you about possible issues with our township and the way we keep records, and could be getting in big trouble with the Government Records Council and putting ourselves in line for lawsuits. So first, I'm going to go back to 309, 2025. How many gallons of sodium hypochlorite does $51,000 buy you? Have we looked into direct purchasing instead of going through all these contracts? Because lots of these things can be purchased from chemical companies online, $50 delivery, delivered right to the water department. You can get 7,700 gallons for $51,000 from Alliance Chemical. Is that a good deal compared to what Main Pool and Chemical Company Incorporated gives us? Where's the kickbacks on that one? All right. Let's talk about in new business number three, Microsoft Office 365. 16 licenses for $5,792. Does that include services from Premier Technology Solutions for actually installing, updating, and everything else, or is it just the licenses? If it's just the licenses, CDW, the government uses them all over the, all over the country, purchasing direct, you could get, you could save $1,400 on that purchase. Why are we wasting our money? Who, who's getting the kickback from Premier Technology? Who's, who's their friends? Is it the New York Premier Technology Solutions Incorporated, or the Southampton, Pennsylvania Premier Technology Solution LLC? Which one is it? Next, I want to say, finally, we got the whole Wawa water bill situation settled, so that's a good thing. But why did it take so long? We went from $100 a quarter to now they're paying $800 to $900 a quarter. How many years were they getting it for $100 a quarter? Where is the incompetence in this township to allow that to happen for so long? All right. Next, I've been putting in Oprah requests through the construction office, or to the construction office, basically for records, for zoning, permits, everything else, for some of these rental properties that people have taken, turned into duplexes with no records left. All they have is an electronic permit cover sheet. They can't find the records, because they went to electronic. Where did all these records go? If you're going to go electronic, you're supposed to scan them all. You're not allowed to destroy them without permission from the state. Where are those reports, or those permission slips, whatever you want to call them, from the state, to destroy them if you don't have them? Supposedly, they've been boxed up and stored somewhere. That's a, that's a poor system for something that's not that old. I actually just asked for another Oprah request for my own property, for the pool and for the solar system, I put in to see if you have the records or not. And that's only in the past eight years or so. So it's, I'm interested to see how long that takes, because on this other request, I think we're on over two months now of me going back and forth, and it's supposed to be seven to 10 days, or seven days, I think, is the requirement. So if I'm having this trouble with just a couple properties, how much of a mess is that office over there? Who decided to go electronic with these records and then screwed that up?
Mike, I'll follow up on some of these tomorrow.
Okay.
Greetings, Louis Lopez, my high resident, County of Burlington, New Jersey. Greetings, thank you for taking my hand, I appreciate it for the warm welcome. I like to see that. Full question is, Revolution of 305 and 309, I'd like to give you an exact explanation of the true revolution. And two other comments I'd like, what is the future status of the Burlington County Roman College? I'd like, you know, if there any information on that property? And any update on the, on the old acne? Any, you know, what's going on? And I think that, oh, yes, the Christmas lighting, it's going to be in this township or where?
At Reflections Park, December 6th, 6:00 p.m.
Oh, in Park?
Reflections Park.
Okay. Yeah, that's all my full question is.
So the old acne?
Yeah, the old acne.
You just got the keys back recently from the last tenant, right? Okay. So the last tenant turned, turned their keys in, so now, once, correct me if I'm wrong, now all the utilities get turned off, and they get, they get scheduled demolition, right?
Sort of.
Okay.
So I actually just sent an email to our public works department about an hour ago, asking them to coordinate utility shut-off. That'd be water, any gas, electric, all that stuff, that needs to be turned off before they can start any kind of demo. I talked to our attorney just a couple minutes ago, wanting to know what we're going to need to do to get the developer in here and start the process of selling that property. As most people are aware, we're selling that property for $2.7 million, and we're paying interest on that loan every day. So the quicker we can get that money and put it against that debt, the less interest we're paying later on, which is a good thing for the taxpayer. So it's going to be a couple more weeks, and I think there's also, council president, I think there's an Amendment Six that we're working on for that redeveloper. It's the landscape, or the streetscaping, and something else on that. We're going to need to get that on the next agenda, probably ASAP, so that we can get that done. And once that's approved, then I'm thinking the developer will come to the table and sign the paperwork to sell the property to them. the paperwork to sell the property to them and get it done. Their goal is to take ownership of this property like yesterday. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
On that next amendment, I think we're waiting on some paperwork from the Pine Lands on that, if I'm not mistaken. Because some of that was streetscaping. They said the Pine Lands required certain things.
They'd already give it to us. It was provided to us for the planning board.
Okay.
There were some questions about previous and pervious landscaping with the crushed rock or whatever.
Yep.
Our planner wanted drought-resistant grass put in there, but the Pine Lands mandated that we put stone in, which was kind of unique, I thought. But we do have a letter from the Pine Lands.
Okay. We do have that letter now? I thought we were still waiting on that.
No, that letter came when it was before the planning, when the applicant was before the planning board. So that was, we had that during the review.
Okay, no problem. I can take care of 305 and 309. Louis, on 30, resolution 305, you wanted to know what that was? That was a grant that we had gotten back in 2022 and fell through the cracks and we almost lost it. We had to redo some paperwork and we're just reaffirming that we got that money for that grant that's going to be used for light, new lighting and fixing up downtown. We're changing some of the landscape down there. And 309, not sure what you wanted to know about that. It was an original contract for the chemicals for treating the wells. We exceeded the amount that we were using. This is what they wanted, an extension, to be able to buy more quantity. And the original contract, there were three bids made for that, but, you know, I don't know all the details without going back and looking at them, okay? And the old college, at the last county meeting, which you were there.
Yeah.
They've issued bids out to tear down the library building. So they're waiting on bids to come back from that. That's what I know about the college.
And I think it's, since they asked me, I upgraded my phone for 4K streaming and 4K video recording at the same time. Look, see, perfect quality right here. And I just want to know how, if I can ask how it is one hour resident, how she is doing. I don't see her here. It's Mrs. Philip.
She's right there.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see her. I don't see her at the freehold, I mean, the commission meeting. And thank you for having me as a guest.
Anytime. Hi, Pat.
Pat Guthrie, 317 Birmingham Road. I have a lot of really important notes and questions that I had for the council, but I like to address one thing that I find overrides any importance of everything that I have on here, and that's in reference to Mr. Ward. The amount that you have taught me and how much I have learned, I really didn't come to council meetings prior to you and Danny becoming part of the council. The education, the time spent, I mean, we spent hours together looking through books and reading and everything that I learned, I have you to thank for. When I come up here, I'm not talking emotions, feelings. I'm able to go to a book, open it up, and state facts on why things should and shouldn't be done. And I have Mr. Ward to thank for that. You're an amazing man. You're a wonderful council member, and I don't know anyone that I respect more. I honestly, it's an honor for you to serve as a councilman on, for the township. And I'd like you to be aware of that, and thank you so much. And that I needed to say before I went into any of this other mess. I went to the zoning board meeting on the 13th, and they talked about the property at 530 Lakehurst, Block 855. And it was advertised on the township website, but it was advertised as Block 588. So if anyone was like me, when I look at the agenda, I look at all the lots and see where it's located. And I like to view everything so that if there's something that's in question, I know exactly which property is being referred to on the website. And this was just totally misadvertised. I was able to look it up by the street. When I went to the meeting and they showed me what they plan on doing as far as splitting a commercial business from a residential home and outlawing, drawing a line, a property line to be able to split the two properties, it kept on being referred to as commercial property. So I would like to know, when you go to the township website, is this supposed to be, like our tax bill, is it written in stone? Is it supposedly actual fact that when you look at the tax bill, because it kept on being referred to as a commercial property, it actually has it listed as a residential property? And there's a daycare on it. And when you look at the tax rates, it's being taxed residential when it's got commercial on the property. When you look at the utility bill, because it's two separate units, you have one solid waste bill, so they only get billed for one, for solid waste where it's shared. There are two water bills, but then there's one sewage bill. So some of this stuff doesn't make sense. And I'm just wondering, because this is what I go by to pay my taxes when I pull up my tax bill, how accurate is this? Like, it just doesn't make sense to me. And to be splitting the property with a bunch of shared services, I honestly believe, I mean, it was approved with conditions, that some of this stuff, before it even gets considered to go into an application for zoning or anything to be done with it, should be straightened out on our website to what type of property it actually is. Because everything I look on here is a mess, having to do with that Block 855. So that being said, I just kind of would like the council to look at that. And, you know, they have maps and stuff from the zoning on what they plan to do with the property. I'm wondering if the fire marshal even looked at it to see if, you know, things are being done per code? Because it just seems like a big old mess, like it shouldn't even been going in front of the zoning board until all the little details should have been straightened out with it first. The next issue, I just want to follow with what Marie was talking about. And, not Marie, I'm just drawing a blank, Deb. As far as these properties being bought up by LLC, they just had something on the Will Kane Show, if you could just give me a couple more minutes, where these properties are being bought up around military bases. And they just found, there was one of the bases, and my husband is the name of it, I'm not that military person, but it was a base that has the B-2 bombers. And they just discovered that at the end of the runway, there was a trailer park that had all kinds of LLCs. And turned out it was China at the end of our B-2 bomber runway that was buying up all this property around the bases. So being that we have Maguire Air Force Base and Fort Dix there, maybe we should take a hard look at some of these companies wanting to buy our properties. Because we surround the base and we're, like, it's a security issue that I think we should make ourselves aware of. But my time is up. I guess I don't have time to talk about this stuff. But under new business number three, or which one was it, with the 365 Microsoft Office? There's a program called Libra that you can get online, and it's absolutely free. If, I mean, it's literally a free Microsoft Office program that doesn't cost a dime. So I don't understand why we are forking out all this money for a Microsoft Office 365. I use it in a business. So I use it in a business. So, I mean, just some of this stuff, some of these expenses, I think we should look twice at.
So I want to go back to the LLCs that have purchased all these properties. So Danny and I met with the base commander over the summer, right, Danny? And we made him aware of some of the LLCs in the foreign countries that are buying these properties, like that one household, the solar panels. He wasn't aware. It was the new base commander. So he said he was going to look into it. He hasn't gone back to us yet with a follow-up. But we can't, we can't, like, restrict who that's illegal, right?
I mean, they are looking on passing something, being that it was on the news about these foreign countries coming in and buying up the properties here in the United States. I believe they're going to put a stop to it. Because, I mean, it's actually causing the housing market to go up where people can't afford, Americans can't afford homes, because these homes are being bought up by LLCs. And it's like it's trying to destroy our economy.
Your point is a security risk.
So, and that's the biggest part, the security issues, being that we are right near Maguire Air Force Base.
Pat, can I answer some of your, or discuss some of your questions you brought up in regards to that? Because I did sit in on a webinar last year about this topic twice, in regards, I mean, granted, it was under the Obama administration, but the folks that were talking about this, there's a federal list of businesses that are on a watch list. I'll find it for you in my emails, and I'll email it to you tomorrow. The issue becomes that the local municipal governments, under municipal land use law, don't have access to those lists unless they request them. So there has to be some communication up the chain in order to request those lists. Once you have those lists, yes, you can restrict them. But you'd have to split it into ordinance in the township, the individual townships, because, as you know, home law dictates that the municipality has the sole restriction possibilities to stop people from coming in like that, those LLCs. So we could pass an ordinance, it is legal in the state of New Jersey. You can pass an ordinance, say, hey, we don't want anything to do with these A, B, C, D, E, F people, as long as you have that list from the federal government. But I'll find out an email, and I'll forward it over to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Jack, do you have any, like, as far as the property taxes and the utilities that are on the website, are they being looked at to make sure everybody is being billed properly and they're, you know, everything's owned properly?
We recently did the sewer thing. I mean, we sent out bills where some of the EDUs were incorrect for some of the businesses. So we have been looking at it, and it's a continual thing. You mentioned the zoning thing. I have nothing to do with zoning board or their process. So what you just talked about was kind of news to me. I'm thinking that's a property right next to the old hornet's nest? Is that correct?
No, it's down by the old Star Deli. It's that daycare center down there.
That daycare center with a business in the back, behind there?
The house is in the back, the daycare center's in the front. Yeah, I was at that planning board meeting, and I had some of the same questions Pat had, but I had to go out of town the next morning.
That would have been zoning board, not planning, right?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Was he addressed, Pat, do you know it?
Yep, I have the paper right here.
Address 530 Lakehurst.
Is 530 Lakehurst Road, and it's Block 855, Lot 4.
The big thing that was overlooked was the one sewer, though, right?
Well, apparently, they have a shared, tell me if I'm reading this right, maybe I'm wrong.
I don't think they're allowed to share.
It has one solid waste, two water bills, and one sewage bill for the single property, and apparently they're also in over yours. And they're trying to split the two properties.
I don't, I don't think they're allowed to have one sewer bill for two properties. I'll check into it. I don't know. I don't know. I'll check into it.
Thank you very much for your time and your answers. And thank you, Mr. Ward, or Councilman Ward.
Good evening, everybody in general. I'm going to start for one of our council. Council John Ward. Please do not resign whoever stated. Residence put you in that position, in that for you to represent the residence, ignore what is behind you. We appreciate what you've been done for our town, and I know that you've been stepping out of your way to do your best for us. You're looking for a residence. And have a nice holidays. Okay, I have a note for one of my resident from Presidential Lake. He's sick right now. He's not able to attend here. He has stated to me if I can do him a favor. He want to know, what is the rule about the golf cars? And the reason he asking me, telling me this, because golf cars are day and night, all racing around in night time with no lights. What are the procedure? They had to have some kind of permit or license or whatever. The next thing is, where he live, his next door neighbor has a camera on his property facing this man's property, that that's illegal, I know for the fact. You don't put a camera in your property facing my property. For this, this neighbor there is watching him every move he make. Even he put a high fence. Why? Because, yes, he has dogs there, and the neighbor complained about it. Well, he did the best he could. And what he did, he got a camera. He put a camera facing his yard. That's illegal, I know for the fact. Those two things he has stated to me, to bring it up to the council and hoping they can just do something. I don't use the names. Okay, I'm going to pick it back in Patty's statement, what she make, when she making the zoning board meeting. My question is going to be, the township had the blame. This has happened 25 years ago. How in the world you can have a child here, here in front of you, a commercial, and you got your house in the back? When you are, how about your taxes? Somebody got to look into whoever approving that and okay that problem. They got a big problem, I'm sorry. Now, the poor guy is fighting, it is true. He's fighting that right now. But now the garbage, I pay my garbage. Now this guy pay only one garbage. I don't know about the water, I don't know about the sewage, but it's not fair. It's either way, whoever, I know there is paper in this building when they approve that to the man. And for that, we are hanging ourselves. I hope that in the future, they take a consideration of that. And about the water bills and everything, it is true, they have to just look into when somebody has a commercial, they got to even come to this place, apply for a permit for a commercial business. That mean that when the township to be step up. But no, they were hungry, they got the money. Go get it. If I'm looking for a house, do you think I'm going to be looking for a? If I'm looking for a house, do you think I'm going to be looking for a house when I have a commercial business in front of my house and I got a chair the same driveway? No, thank you, bye. Okay, now I'm going to leave it away. About the psychomorph hall, please take it off the tax sale. Please. In reference to the Burlington County College, yes, Victor, I haven't attended the meeting because I got to attend another meetings, I'm sorry, I haven't see you. And for the insurance company. I hear the rumor what is going to happen in here and you got to give me the few more minutes, okay? And I'm going to speak to the insurance company right now, okay? I was in a bad accident several years ago too. And I know what the insurance company did to me, but it wasn't even my fault. They prosecuted me twice. I've been better off in that and they have been prosecuted twice. Okay. Now, I stayed in the last meeting, the sooner later, Paul is going to run out of money, cannot supply Peter. And this, we are right to the point now, what are we going to do about it? Okay, now, what happened with the BA? We slide the whole year around with our BA. We need a BA. Please, put it for have a BA. We blow the money lawsuit, but we can afford a BA, we really got a problem. Okay, let me, yes. I've been noticed, the houses isn't one of the agenda there. I know I reported that house and I know that I've been said that house, I've been see boarded up. I know all the name, the street and this town, because I used to be a paper lady. Guess what? You ask me for name of the street, I can tell you where the stupid street is. Okay, now, I know my belt probably run already. I want to just be sure that anybody being asked, yeah, they going to up the Burlington County College, that is coming up, across the street, in those, in that property there, that we building a forest in there? We pushed the Burlington County College to cover loan, but we didn't do nothing to the people across the street. It's a forest, we don't need a forest here. We got plenty forest on the other side. Okay, and for me, I know they are going, yes, sing a song, but guess what? I be here every two weeks and I will fight for my residence. And Mr. Ward, stay put and good luck. Good luck, everybody, have a nice Thanksgiving. Don't pay attention to the rumors.
I came tonight, I'm Vicky Adams, 613 Sander Drive. I came tonight, actually pretty calm. I was furious last week and I have spoken to a couple of you and you know why, and I'm going to still let the public know why I'm furious, but I'm even more furious that someone would ask Josh Ward, a gentleman who has did nothing but the best that he can, to tell him that he doesn't have the best interest of this town in his heart? Excuse my language, but bullshit. I'm saying it like it is and whoever one of you was, shame on you. You're the one that doesn't have the township in your heart. Bottom line, that man over there has sacrificed. He has put his family through hell with some of the situations that have happened up here. I'm sorry, but I would have quit a long time ago. But he has stood his ground and he has served. And shame on whoever did this. Okay. Now, go back to my original tirade, because now I'm just as much upset about it as I was last week, okay? Matt, you misspoke. You and the rest of us, all, all of you, never corrected him for his misstatement. I called it a lie, but I was told that that was too forward, okay? You said that the two lawsuits that were settled had nothing to do with the mayor, that they were old, bull. I knew immediately you were lying, because I personally posted those two lawsuits.
Please don't call me a liar. I don't appreciate that.
Oh, I'm sorry, but it was a wrong statement, okay? Because I knew personally that those two lawsuits were on my social media pages when they first happened. And they were about the mayor.
They weren't against the mayor though.
They were against our township because of the mayor's actions.
My words were, they were not against the mayor.
I have your words on my phone, I can pull it up, because I copied it off the last meeting, okay? My question now is, what else is everybody up here not telling us the truth about? Okay? If you're not going to stand up for a misstatement, what else are you hiding? Okay? Many of us have asked what's happening with the repayments of funds given to Michelle Brown for her paid vacation. All we hear from you is, the mayor said he's not going to pay it back and referred to this other person. I do not understand why you guys are not bringing charges against him and the other two people involved in the chain of misappropriated funds. I am outraged that nothing has been done. We have focused on the mayor repaying, however, the CFO and the HR employee are just as much to blame. Michelle Brown requested the money knowing it was not hers to use. The mayor said, go ahead. But the CFO, the one who issued the money, knew it was ill-gotten gains. I did a little bit of research. I found the code, New Jersey Code of Criminal Justice, Section 2C 30-2, official misconduct. This is just an overview. The public servant committing an unauthorized act in an official capacity or knowingly refraining from duty with the intent to benefit themselves or another, or to cause injury, this is a second degree crime. Okay, let's just break that down a little bit. Definition of official misconduct. One, committing an unauthorized act. A public servant does something in their official capacity that they know is unauthorized or is done in an unauthorized way. Well, you know what? You ask what's been done, that's easy, a misappropriation funds. $4,000 unlawfully paid and non-earned time off given to Michelle Brown. You have spoken, you have the evidence of falsified documents that covered it up. Why haven't you guys brought charges against him? They are all officials in Pemberton Township. They are all on the administrative staff, they're all officials. That is your guys' job to protect our town. I'm furious. Okay, sorry guys, I'm furious. The next part of this is refraining from a duty. A public servant knowingly fails to perform a duty that is required by law or is inherent to their job. Okay, well, what did he refrain from doing? The mayor has time and time again refused to hire a BA from the many applications that have been turned in. And tonight, you guys didn't even ask, answered Alex's question when he asked what's going on with the BA hiring situation. Okay, he already broke two parts of this misconduct. Do you know what the penalties are for official misconduct? Official misconduct is a second degree crime in New Jersey. Conviction can lead up to 10 years in prison. That means for any one of those three, they could end up 10 years in prison. Now, you're not Mr. Connors, I don't know your name, but I was going to direct this to the lawyer. You can give me a few extra minutes like you gave everybody else.
Mr. Macklin.
Okay, okay, you're the lawyer. The facts have been proven by receipt and falsification of records. I hope that you will file charges against these people. My concerns are that you as a council have allowed the mayor's behavior to continue and do not hold him accountable. Gentlemen, you are now being held accountable. Just like someone who is arrested for something he declares he didn't know was against the law. Well, now you know. I just gave you the criminal statute. So now I'm holding you accountable. I am stating, and I'm sure others would agree with me, you need to do your job. Hopefully the next council meeting, you can regain some of my trust. Because right now, I'm furious, okay? And I'm going to bring up my other thing.
Just real quick, the council and I have no power in bringing criminal charges. That would all go through Burlington County.
Like I said to a couple of the other councilmen, then you guys should all be unanimously standing at that door, knocking it down, getting on Facebook, getting on the thing and making that person, which I think, I don't even know the title of them, to take and do his job. Okay? Because apparently, he's not doing his job, just like the mayor's not doing his job. Okay, you even had to state a level. You should be knocking down their doors.
Vicky, with the frustration that you just showed, I can appreciate it. The same frustration goes across this entire council. Everything you just talked about has been turned over to the prosecutor's office. Everything you just talked about has gone to the attorney general's office. Yet here we are, no charges. Everything, everything you just spoke of. I'm very sure that, I'm quite certain that they are very well versed on the criminal statute you just provided to the public and that's great and I do appreciate that. Yet we are being told it does not apply.
And again, I would tell them the same thing I said to you guys, it's bullshit. It does apply. He is an official. They misappropriated the funds. I'm going to stand here and I'm going to challenge our township to start calling these people, who's it, attorney general and the prosecutor's office? And start to take and bombard them with phone calls to get this, their job done. Because this is ridiculous, guys, that this is all happening. We have to go another whole year. Another whole year, let's see, he's had an average of three lawsuits a year, so we have another three lawsuits coming up. Think about it. We're ready to lose just because of it. We're, you know, come on.
You're not starting to time me yet, are you? I usually wait till I sign the book, are you gonna? Who's timing? Thank you. Mrs. Foreman, Michelle Foreman, or Mrs. Foreman. But I'm not Miss Foreman. Just FYI. I have a reason for that. Know what I mean? Okay. Okay. I'm kind of thrown off because I'm not feeling too good after hearing what happened with Josh and I appreciate your honesty, Mr. Ward. And I agree with all the sentiments from everybody in the room tonight, right? I feel like I don't know if I should mind my own business and shut up or what should I do about this? You know what I mean? I have a feeling who it was, right when he said it, but, you know, do I mind my own business or do I say Josh Ward is my business? Apparently, he's everybody's business, because everybody had something to say. Please don't resign. You know, I have to be honest with you. A lot of us, we all love you, a lot of us. And we appreciate you being here. And you go the extra mile. The extra classes, the extra meetings, the extra town halls, thank you for that. Thank you for caring about us. You have to work so hard at that restaurant and you still come here. I don't know how you do it. I don't know how I do it. And I'm not working full-time, I'm working very part-time. I believe it. And a family and grandchildren, right? Two or one grand?
One on the way.
One on the way. Okay. So that means that'll make two, right? Oh, gotcha. Okay. So, my time's ticking away. I, I'm a little upset because I feel like everything's like, not this again. Here we go again. First, they said I couldn't have the videos for the meetings, I have hard copies. And then they said I could have the video after it was in the paper that they were, I got a recording of me having a video, even though they said I couldn't have videos, that was accidentally given to me by Donna. The mayor said he knew they were videoing, but somebody else said he didn't, they didn't know. This was, no, it was accidentally given to me. I want a copy, a hard copy of the videos as well as audio. I am not getting it. And I just feel like I'm back to square one. I'm going, first I can have them, then I can't, then I can, now I can't. And I don't want the dumbed-down version. I have a lot of good reasons why I want the hard copies of these CDs for the meetings. Well, somebody will look into that, but I only have five minutes, so I got to hurry up to the next topic, but... Right. Right. And planning and zoning. Not audio only, I want video and audio. But apparently, it's too much trouble to get that for me. I'm like, here we go again, deja vu, back to no video. Okay, that's one thing. The other thing I want to say real quick is, who wrote this ordinance? Who brought this back? Who brought this back? Ordinance 30, 2025? We were happy that this got voted down. Thanks to, I believe, Dan Dewey and Josh Ward not voting for this at the last time.
Which one are you talking about, Michelle?
Ordinance 30, 2025. Who brought this back? You don't have to answer yet, because I only have five minutes. You can answer when I'm done talking, because I'm holding it to somebody. Okay, and then also, whoever's writing these, please, give us more information. Capital improvements, I'm sorry, that's not telling me anything. I know you guys have the books and the pamphlets and everything, we got to wait till the next meeting or wait maybe tomorrow, since it's been introduced? I don't know when we can get a copy of these ordinances to find what's going on. But I want to know, that's deja vu too. We didn't like it, we didn't like it when things got voted down and brought back. Chronicle did that one night for four different topics. We didn't like that. Now they're doing it again. They're bringing it back to vote on, even though it was voted down. Okay, the other thing is, just real quick, I got to talk fast, sorry, but I do. Thank you. We have this Resolution 325, 2025. About, they're trying to tell us they're going to, this is a revitalization of Blueberry Manor Park drainage improvements. Trust me, this has to do with the new Lisbon development, just like Greenberg. And they're trying to say they're going to fix the water for the high school after all. But really, they want to fix the water for Greenberg Development. And this is the same thing here. You know, and as far as this one goes, where is Pemberton Heights? That's another question, but back to my stuff here, okay? I just want to wrap this up by saying, my son has chickens, they're crazy, they're so awesome. But they have each other's backs all the time. When they're perched on the thing, they're always looking back. Like, one goes this way, well, one goes that way. One sits this way, one sits, they're watching each other's backs at all time. And who decides? Who decides where to develop? We're not doing Paul Bridge, thank God, okay? There are other things that have been voted down, thank God. But who's to say, oh, let's have development here where they don't want it either? Well, who gets to choose? Anyway, I think that's about it. I'm going to wrap it up by saying, we got to have each other's back. We can't just fight for one development because it's big or because, you know, they have a lawyer or anything. We have to fight for the rights of everybody who doesn't want development in their backyard. And it seems to me, there's a lot of stuff on this ordinance tonight. To me, again, it's deja vu all over again. Too much, too soon, too fast. That's all I got to say. Thank you for showing up all the time.
Council President, may I address two items that Ms. Foreman talked about?
Oh, Mrs. Foreman, sorry.
Mrs., I'm sorry, forgive me, Michelle. Is that okay too?
Oh, you can call me Michelle, I'd be happy for that, just not this.
So, Blueberry Manor Park is over off of Scammel.
Right.
It's in T and M. So it's all the way across the other end of the town. They had old rusty nasty dangerous playground equipment in there a few years ago that we deemed unsafe, so they removed it. So I don't believe there might be a park bench out there right now and that's about it. We did get a grant to redo that. With state stormwater management, anytime you go in and put a park in or something like that, you have to do the stormwater management as well. So that's why stormwater management is on this, to do the park. So it has nothing to do with over here on the west end. It has everything to do with T and M.
Does it benefit the new development on Junction Road at all?
The new development on Junction Road, yeah, it probably will. If there's kids in there, they'll go there to play.
So what I said was true.
What the mayor's saying is it's just for the park, it's engineering for the park, because it's been so long since it was taken out of there. They have to do re-engineering and stuff.
It's going to benefit the new...
But it's gonna benefit the new development at Junction Road as well.
Well, it's gonna benefit the children from Blueberry Manor too. I mean, it was their park altogether, you know?
Yeah, possibly Bel Air Trailer Park, kids will go over there and play on them too.
Well, I still, okay, thank you, thank you. I, I listened to what you say, but I still think it's a guise that they're trying to fix the water for the new development and Junction Road.
There's no water, Michelle. It's, it's literally just the drainage.
Right, I understand.
That's the water as it falls from the sky.
They need that drainage at, at the new development, because they're cutting down all those trees, you're gonna need it. So it's gonna benefit them, one way or the other. That's the way I feel.
But anyhow, the other one that I wanted to address, it's kinda funny you ask a question, because it's a pet peeve of mine. You asked Pemberton Heights.
Yeah, where is that?
There's two Pemberton Heights.
Yeah.
Which is really strange.
America said it was where I live.
Huh?
America said one week it was where I live.
No, there's a Pemberton Heights actually where I live.
Oh.
Um, over by Emmens Elementary School, there's an area there called Pemberton Heights.
Oh, okay.
And Josh, you're probably well aware of it?
Uh, yeah, that's one of the questions I have for tonight with some of the wording. And I don't wanna step on you, but I'll follow you.
But, I mean, I got on Google Maps one time years ago and saw Pemberton Heights. And I was like, oh wow, that's cool. And I asked some of my old-time neighbors that have been there for, you know, decades. And they, they said, yeah, we've been known as Pemberton Heights for, forever. And then I started seeing what I call Johnson Court.
Johnson Court.
Over across from the VFW. The Borough and a couple of other folks seem to call that Pemberton Heights.
Oh.
And Chief Augustoni, the fire chief, and I were actually in my office talking about...
You mean across the legion, right?
The American Legion, did I say VFW? Too many mil... too many organizations. But it's over on that other end of town. And the reason they call it Johnson Court is that's the big loop circle there that encompasses the whole area. So a lot of people refer to it, myself anyway, call it Johnson Court. And then where I live is, is Pemberton Heights. For some reason, now we have two Pemberton Heights. Heaven forbid I ever have to call an ambulance and they show up at Johnson Court.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so it's very confusing. But if you look at Google Maps and some other things, over by Emmens Elementary School is Pemberton Heights.
Interesting.
The other one, I think, I don't know how it got that, that name, but I'd prefer it to go back to Johnson Court.
Well, the, the issue, the issue becomes that they argued that in the Borough, because there was a road named Johnson's Court that conflicted with the geographical designation of Johnson's Court. And there was a whole argument between Borough Council on this recently.
Oh, really?
I don't know why there, there's such a big uproar not just calling it Johnson's Court. I mean, we were in Rato, we're in Rato Village. That's what I know it as. But, you know, now it's changed to Pemberton Heights, or it's always been Pemberton Heights, and then they built Rato Village. And, you know, the signs say Rato Village, the signs say Lake Valley. It's, it's very interesting. I'd rather some of the wording in the resolution this evening say something besides Pemberton Heights and identify it by either a latitude and longitude, if there's a discrepancy, as opposed to Pemberton Heights, because that scares me.
The, the thing I have, Josh, is both locations belong to the township.
Fix that problem.
So we shouldn't let the Borough dictate what is township.
Absolutely correct, Jack. I mean, you know, look, you got a, you got a true donut hole in Pemberton Borough, right? It's one of only three in the entire state of New Jersey, I believe, that are left. And that, for that donut hole, it's very confusing, because if you have Pemberton Heights, which I'll reference where me and Jack live, then you go into Birmingham, which then connects back to a new Pemberton Heights. Doesn't make any sense, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's very confusing. And again, it scares me for several different reasons.
Well, he just said too.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, thank you, Mayor Jack Tompkins. My other question was, whose brilliant idea was to bring this back to the council tonight? To the ordinance tonight?
So that ordinance...
Who made that idea?
That ordinance has been redone, so it's been rewritten.
But whose idea was it to bring it back?
It was a majority of the council.
Majority? What does that mean? Three or more of you?
Yeah.
Four or three?
So...
I wanna know. Just wanna know who keeps bringing this back.
Well, I mean, we're, it's for work being done in the township, so we have to address it eventually, one way or the other.
Okay, but it's to benefit Greenberg.
Council President, if I can add...
So don't try to pretend it's not.
No.
Michelle, Council President's right. There's a, there's council members that are aware of what we're trying to accomplish here with this bond ordinance. It's, it's many or multiple projects. So our water department has been talking to the supervisor of Public Works. They've been talking to me, we've been talking internally, and then conveying our concerns to some of the council members. And they're starting to see, is that wrong? Our, our viewpoint and, and our concerns. So that's why this, this ordinance keeps coming back up, because there are some things on here that are critical, that we're gonna need for our, our water department to operate.
So, so, so Michelle, so we, we can't give the ordinance out before it's signed, because it's subject to change up until it's signed? Or, no, till it's approved? Introduced? So we removed, I'll tell you, we removed the West Side project. That's, that's out. That's not in there anymore.
What's West Side mean?
The West, the one that councilman Ward was against?
Greenberg?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you're not gonna do Greenberg?
So we removed that.
Since we're talking about the ordinance, I'm not just against because it said West Side, but I'll discuss it properly when the ordinance comes up.
Okay. Okay, so did it have anything to do with a solicitor that gave you these ideas? Or you guys just came up with ideas yourself?
We met, myself...
Did you meet with the solicitor?
Myself and Mr. Harper met with the Public Works.
Public Works.
And we prioritized what they needed on that, in that ordinance. And we removed what was out of priority.
Okay, well, just to let you know, Mr. Hornet said that this, this project was gonna be used by tax... No, somebody said taxpayers. No, 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 it's the water people who pay the water bill. That's where we're gonna get the money for this. It's on one of the tapes that I want. And, and so now, we're get... now it's gonna come down to, on taxpayers to do this. But anyway, I think you answered all my questions. Who, who wrote this ordinance? Who, who got this ordinance? Who got this agenda together tonight, put all this stuff on it that didn't give us enough information? On some of this stuff. Who, who, who did this?
Ms. Foreman.
Who does it? Is it you, is it the solicitor, a bunch of people?
I am the one that types up the agenda based on the items given to me to put on the agenda.
Given to you by who? Just wanna know.
Some comes from administration, some comes from council, some comes from other departments.
Solicitors?
From the solicitor, but they're, they're acting on direction from either the council or administration.
Okay, thank you.
If you wanna know specifically regarding the water ordinance, that was rewritten, actually, by myself and the CFO. We took out the items that council requested to have taken out, redid the numbers, and put it back on. We didn't have the solicitor do that, because it wasn't necessary to pay them to do that.
So I can get a copy of the old and the new?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Patrick Guyerson, 59 West Hampton Street. I guess we'll start right from the beginning here. Authorizing the purchase for the jet vac truck. How much storm sewer do we have to take care of in this township that aren't county roads that the county should be responsible for, for one? What's the matter with the old truck? It can't have that many miles on it. Isn't it easier just to put a new vac on it? Because if they treat this one any different than they treated the old one, as I watched it go down South Pemberton Road with the hose dragging behind it going to the sewer plant, it probably ain't gonna last a whole hell of a lot longer. You know, same as the street sweeper that we had to have for 300 and some thousand dollars that I get, see going down Birmingham Road, where there is no curb. I don't know, it don't make a whole hell of a lot of sense to me. I think the grass and everything takes care of that. All right, moving on down. On the liens against people for having property maintenance code issues, I don't know what that code is. But it's funny that, once again, hey, if they're, they're not in compliance, I get it. But we're going after residents here in the township. But yet, I go down North Pemberton Road and Arnie's Mount Road, and I see what was deemed a blight that looks a hell of a lot more like a blight now than it ever did when I was farming it. Are we going against Hubnanian for a lien? Because he sure as hell ought to. Same is with taxes. Have they been set back on farmland assessment yet? We keep spending money here, but I, I don't know where we're getting the stuff that we should be getting it from. Same as the water, the sewer, and everything else. You know? Like you said before, this administration couldn't run a damn lemonade stand. Onto the water. Now, I looked up the, or the tax map. One here at 786.01, lots 12 and 22, 787, lot 1. Now, according to this, 786.01, lot 13, which is 326-2025, encompasses pretty much the whole farm up to Lupinetti's. The other lot is out front, where the light is, the two water holes. 787 is the creek, basically, the woods, all right? Lot 12, according to the tax maps, if they're correct, is the easement for the airport. Is the airport. I didn't know that they bought the airport. So I think we need to look into that too and see where that goes. That's according to the township's tax map. Now, on lot 22, like you said, that's the one out front.
Pat, lot 12?
Lot 12, yeah. 786.01, lot 12, man. Now, on the other one, going to 786.01, lot 13, we have a well there. That's what this is for this resolution. Now, how did the township put a well on private property and now is relinquishing the rights to that well that taxpayers paid for? That seems to be a pretty big question. So once again, like you said, we can go after code enforcement for the people in this town. But we'll bend over and grab our ankles for Hubnanian. We're gonna give them that well? Because that's where they need to put their retention base, and it's right in the corner there. So first off, who authorized the well, which I know wasn't this administration, it was the prior one? To go on that property, there has to be some agreement there between Mr. Greenberg and the township at that point. And now the township is relinquishing the rights to that well? Seems a little fishy to me. Somebody profited from it, and it sure as hell wasn't the taxpayers of this town. You know, this agreement with Greenberg Farm with Hubnanian has got more holes in it than a slice of Swiss cheese. This is a joke. So if anybody can answer the million-dollar question on that well, I'd love to hear it.
Pat, I was, I was involved with the meeting with the wells. And Hovania is reimbursing us the money that we... I don't think we got all of it, but we got most of the money that we put out for the wells. They're paying for them.
It was about 80K, from what I understood.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what we got.
I don't remember the exact amount either.
Aren't they contributing the half a million dollars to the stand pipe? And that was one of the things that we used to factor?
Yeah, but there was a set amount just for the well.
Right, there was a, there was a bunch of different things.
All right, well, once again, how did this agreement ever go through, to start with, when now this resolution is coming up? So we're amending stuff constantly with this. This agreement should be null and void to start with, as many amendments as it's got. Like you said, it's got more holes than Swiss cheese does. It shouldn't have been approved to start with. Thank you. Oh, and everybody, have a nice and happy Thanksgiving.
You too, Pat. All right, all right, all right. Let's move on. One more.
I agree with Pat. Here we go again. Not a dump truck, now it's a jet vac. Where do we, where do we use it around town? Hello? Any answers? Okay. Where are we at on the budget for 2025? We got money left for this? Are we over budget, under budget? Where are we at? Where are we at, Dewey? We got, how much more? Can we buy a couple more dump trucks? How about police cars and... How much money? Are we under budget still? Why would you say that? But that's not what I heard from you, when you run for, when you said you were running for council. We're gonna show you, Joe, we're gonna save money here, we know this does this, and we know, we're gonna save some money in this town. I don't see it. Everything comes up here, everything. This, that, that, approve, 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 approve. Where are you saving money? Where?
Is that your general question, Joe?
No, I got another, I had to say something to Josh. I think you ought to resign. Whoever said you should resign? I think you should resign and run for mayor. That's what you should do. Don't, don't put ideas in my head, Joe. Resign from here, run from there. Then you can stick it right up the ass whoever told you that. So, you'd have my boot, you got one.
And just so you know, nothing's approved on here yet, right?
Okay. Well, I hope when you guys take this vote, we don't need, I, I mean, a jet vac for five, this is crazy. Oh, there's something else. What is this Junction Roads? What is this Junction Roads spruce redevelopment plan? Is this something new? What are they building there? What condominiums? When, when, when did they sneak this in?
It wasn't snuck in, that was, that was with the whole, what Danny, with the, with the solar panel fields in the 90...
I thought the solar panel field was up around the bend.
It is, but it's like in that same area. It's between the, the bend, Joe, and then, yeah.
So there's condominiums, so they're gonna just destroy that whole side of Junction Road there, the woods, all that.
It's okay.
The same woods where the pine snakes come from, Pole Bridge farce over to that same woods. And yet, we just, here we go with over re... did you, over redevelopment. And now we're talking about water, sewage, we need a jet vac. Water, sewage, water, sewage. Greenberg Farm being developed. You don't have water for that. We gotta make a deal with Pemberton Borough. Pat telling you about this well. Why didn't you charge them for a million dollar for to get that well? You're not a very good businessman. I would, I'd make them pay up the ass for it.
Joe, they weren't gonna pay anything at all.
Well, and then they wouldn't get it, now would they?
No.
But you just gave in and said 80,000? Is that what you're gonna give it to them for?
It was a done deal before we got here. We saved the town 10 million dollars.
All right. How was your hunting trip? Good?
Don't forget December 6th, Doyle's.
December 6th, yeah. Whoever said that to Josh needs to apologize to him, because I know how I get. I say stupid shit like that. You gotta, you gotta swallow your pride, you gotta apologize to him. Whoever said that.
Joe, honestly, I don't want an apology. This'll be empty.
All right. Anybody else? We're gonna take a five-minute break.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
10:15, everybody else did.
Ryan. Why not be watching this? I'm on five.
I can't, like I said, I don't have the time. They're continuing to report. You can watch the video. That camera over there. Not asking, just talking.
Not barking.
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, I hear you. Yep. Getting the sun out. I have sleep. I'm trying. Yeah, I'm heading out. Yeah, I, I hear you. Yep. I'm getting some water. Yep. I have some water. Yeah. 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 Wow. Even my students are afraid of me.
Well, she's got work tomorrow, and I got a four-day just here.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, it's got a big, it's got a, it's got a. It was named a bomb shelter, so it's got really thick walls. It's the basement, it's a trap, and now they're coming. And then there's a, an air raid site on a roof, and I, so far, I've done four switches and stuff. It does work. I've already turned it on. I've turned it on, because when I did the inspection, that Peter was there, and she told me that. Yes, she's old as a woman. I won't get her to turn it on. Yeah. Well, 1960, so she was in crisis, and, yeah. Yeah, she really sold out. Yeah. But, yeah. The salt coming, we're not doing salt, it was just too shitty. Yeah. 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 Paulie hasn't seen it. No? No, because he's, he's got a short. Oh, it's so cool. Yeah. Yeah. So, still putting things going. I know, he's going to be late. Hey. Yeah. 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 I really enjoy it. Amazing. Okay. Oh, well, look at your bathroom. Yeah. So, all of a sudden. This Wednesday is the meeting here. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. You be sure that you, you close your jar, okay? Because it's very cold. I know, I, I'm super excited about that. Okay, we see you. I don't know. No, everyone's bought it. Yeah. 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 I'll see you later. All right, let's get back to business.
Resolutions. Gentlemen, consent agenda, any appetite?
Uh, what did I tell you I wanted to talk about?
15, 16?
Uh, yeah, 15, 16, and talk just a little bit about 25.
Okay.
So 315, 316?
325. Danny?
Yeah.
Josh?
306, I'd like to pull. Sorry, 306, I'd like to pull. 316 was already pulled. 324, I'd like pulled. 324. And that's all.
All right. Perry?
I'm glad.
All right. Okay, so we need a motion for a consent agenda with the exception of 306, 315, 316, 324, and 325.
I'll make a motion for a consent agenda on the resolutions, with the exception in pulling 306, 315, 316, 324, and 325.
Second?
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchi?
Yes. Okay, resolution 306, 2025, authorizing the purchase of one new jetback truck model number 900-ECO for the Department of Public Works in a total amount of $565,865.87.
So, Jack, what's, what's going on with the other back truck that we have right now?
All right, I think, I think part of it may be confusion, because everyone sees that nice shiny white back truck that we have. That actually belongs to the sewer system. So, the sewer utility paid for that. It's used only for the sewer normally.
Okay.
We do have, if you notice, there's a red jetback that's running around town. I think it's like 20, 25 years old. I've seen them repairing it constantly. When they do fill it up, usually the water's running out of it almost as quick as they put it in. It's really exceeded its lifeline. We wanted to do this last year, and we put it off because of, I think it was a street sweeper.
So, so, so where do we see, where do we see the jetback being used mostly around town? I mean, I know I see it over in Lake Valley, but that's a closed system, so Oak Pines? Where else?
They're, they're going to be using it everywhere. It's minuscule prop, minuscule responsibility. They did change, DEP changed stormwater management rules a year or so ago. There is a new requirement, I can't remember, once or twice, we need to.
Not for, I know the, I, I sat in on those, not for a jetback truck.
We need, we need to clean the storm sewer drains, and we use a jetback truck to do that. So even over in, like, Evergreen, uh, Orange Garden over in that area, we would use it for all the drains and, and stormwater in there. We would use it over in T and M. We would use it over in, in Lake Valley or where we live, and we would use it over in Johnson Court, I'm sure. So that's just a few of the places we would use this.
Um, for a price tag of 565, half a million dollars, as, as a township, how long have we known we needed a jetback truck? I'll start there. I mean, obviously, since this thing.
To be honest, Josh, I mean, I was riding around town when I first got elected.
2020.
2023, when we first got elected.
Right.
And I saw the way they were, they were pumping water into this thing, and it was running out like crazy. And I saw them using duct tape on, on some of the hoses and other things. They've been doing some convent, unconventional maintenance on this thing to keep it limping along. I got to commend our public works for doing what they do to get this thing to work, but it is way past time to replace it.
Okay. And my, my last question is just a really simple one-worder. Has the township looked into shared services with other municipalities around our area? Yes or no?
I'm not sure.
That's all the questions I have.
Anybody else?
The only other question I had was, uh, what Mr. Guyberson brought up that I, I would like a little clarification on. Of the 100% of the drains in this town, what would you say, Jack, roughly, is township, what percentage would be township drains as opposed to county drains?
Considering all the housing areas, I would say more than 50% of the drains are ours, because of the different housing areas that do have stormwater management drains. And that's, I'm not the expert, I would have to talk to public works, but that's my guess.
The only thing this is used for is stormwater drains, that's it? No other uses for it?
I'm sure they can use it for other things, Perry, but I honestly can't put my finger on something right now to name out for you.
Why don't we just pull it till we can get somebody to attend a meeting that can give us the answers we need?
I'm fine with that. Need a motion?
Harry, you see the wheels turning?
Well, I mean.
They're valid questions.
Yeah, I.
Half a million dollars, a lot of money.
Yep, and I know it was, something was discussed and pulled off of last year's budget, even though I wasn't a councilman then. It's a 2006, I believe, truck. Yeah, it's old. I mean, it can be used as backup for the sewer departments if theirs goes down, but, yeah, I mean, uh, the way I understand it, and I'm not as well-versed as some, that it's a requirement for the stormwater management, you know, so, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase.
I'll second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchi?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
No.
Mr. Doyle?
No, not without further questions being answered.
Mr. Dewey?
Jack, what I would do is recommend looking into some shared services.
Jack, as far as I go with my vote, sir, I'd, I'd like to have some of these questions answered. I know a lot of times you have a problem with a department head or somebody coming in here being able to speak and answer these questions directly, but if, if we could do that, you know, not only the questions for us, but we're asking questions based upon, hold on, based upon what we're hearing from the public.
Being 100% honest, I don't have a problem with department heads being here. They have a problem. As confrontational and, and, and argumentative as the council gets with them, they have a problem coming here.
The council has never gotten argumentative or confrontational from any, to any person, department head in this community, Jack. Don't pull that.
I've got to agree with Councilman Warren and Councilman Doyle. I've, I've, in my time coming to these meetings, sitting on the council, not on the council, I've never seen any kind of arguments or confrontations with the department heads. That's just my experience with it, so.
I don't speak directly with employees on this matter, but I speak to family members of employees, and they would love to be here to answer our questions. Moreover, for the public, not for us.
All right, let's move on. Resolution 315, 2025, authorize the refund of 2025 tax overpayment due to overbilling.
Yeah, the reason I brought that up, I've gotten some documentation, you guys all got it, and I don't understand, you know, when you go farmland assessment or forestry assessment, you don't change the assessed value of the property, you take a percentage of the tax off. And the way I'm reading the documentation that came with this, it's, you know, changing the assessment from 74,100 down to 100, you know, so I don't know what they're going to pay, well, $3.25, I guess. You know, I mean, I, I think we need more explanation about this either from the tax assessor and how he came to this decision. Yeah, I mean, hell, I'd buy the property for 100 if that's what they're, you know, changing the assessment to. I mean, we're, from looking at the maps, I think it's 18.9 acres of ground. So, I mean, I'd like us to just table this and, and maybe get some explanations from either the tax assessor or the tax collector's office and to how they came.
Our, our tax assessor did call me when this issue come up. He was a little concerned.
Uh-huh.
Because he is licensed to do this.
Okay.
Um, and normally, he says it's his job to set the assessment.
Right.
And normally, there's no interference from the governing body or outside sources when he assesses a property. And I think there's going to be, I mean, you can ask the questions, but I think you're going to get the answer of, that's what I assessed it at, that's the guidelines I used, and that's what it is.
Well, I guess I'd still like to have him either, either, you know, set up a meeting and we'll chat, or he can come here and we'll chat, but I, I'm, I'm just fully not understanding this, and I'm, again, you know, I had to go out of town for a few days, but I'll do some more investigating on this myself. But, you know, the people that came up with the decision, I'd like to just know how it was done, you know? So, I, I'd request that we table it until we get more information.
Motion?
Uh, I'd make a motion that we table 315, 2025, until we get.
I'll second.
Further explanation.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchi?
Yes.
I, I mean, just, you know, we're, we're hemorrhaging money and, and, you know, to go from $74,000 value to a 100 value, uh, just doesn't seem right, you know?
It's the state code.[1573.91]
Lawyers. Resolution 316, 2025, authorizing payment and change order to J E V for New Lisbon Water System Improvement Phase Two.
Again, I think I was the one that asked you to pull that one.
Yeah.
And I'm not upset at all about, you know, change orders happen all the time, and the amount of the change order isn't a lot, but, you know, reading the documentation again, we originally knew, they originally knew about this issue on January 15th of this year, and I believe we had a meeting on January 15th of this year, and we didn't get any, you know, information on it. And, and, yeah, I guess it was just something that was dropped between the cracks, but then on June 4th, documentation I'm looking at, Jack, you authorized it, and we had a meeting on June, June 4th of this year, so it wasn't brought up to us again, and now it's being brought up to us now to be approved. That's not the way it usually happens. I had no problem with the dollar amount because change orders do happen, but it's just the way, way that it went about, there was more than ample opportunities for council to be made aware of this and approve this, and, and it didn't happen. That's all I wanted to say about that.
I guess that, that's A R H again, right?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. Nothing more has to be said.
A motion?
Make a motion to approve 316, 2025.
Second.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes.
324, 2025, approves agreement with the Borough of Pemberton pursuant to the County and Municipal Water Supply Act, NJSA 40A 31-1, to provide water in the existing homes in Pemberton Heights and to block 786 dot oh one lots 12 and 22 and block 787 lot one in the township of Pemberton for the development known as Four Seasons at Rancoas Creek.
I just have one thing to say since I pulled this on 324. Everybody that's here, mark my words, November 17th, 8:09 PM, this will be another mis, giant, one of the biggest mistakes that Pemberton Township does in its history moving forward. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
You had some issue with the language about the Pemberton Heights too, right, Josh? On there?
Yeah, Harry, thanks. And I know, Amy, you gave us an explanation on that, and I, I get it. I think you said, you brought it up last time, I'm not sure if I'm, it's correct?
I don't recall giving you an explanation on that.
I think, I, I thought you explained it to somebody on your audience before, but, yeah, I'm sorry, probably not.
I, I, I think you and I talked about it on the phone a little bit, but...
I'm not, I'm definitely not going to sit there and say that there's two, you know, just agree, Harry, that there's two Pemberton Heights. You know what I mean? And I'm not yelling at you, I'm not, you know, I'm just stating it for everybody out there, okay? Either you have, I mean, that's like, I mean, I, obviously, there's two different towns, different areas. I, I'd like this, I, if I was even going to vote for this, which I'm not, ever going to vote for this, okay? If we have two Pemberton Heights, then it should be differentiated by latitude and longitude. That's just my personal opinion, then you can't go wrong. But to me, Pemberton Heights is our side of town, okay? Over on Emmens School's side of town, and I don't, I don't want to get it twisted, so just so everybody knows, this is not personal needs, I'm, I'm, my ask is not one of personal needs, which was falsely also and maliciously stated in the message that I got, or my best interests, okay? I talk to my neighbors on my side of town, I have constituents all over town that would probably say the same thing about their, their, their places, okay? But the borough already doesn't supply our Pemberton Heights with water. They don't, right? So what the concern would be is if you put Pemberton Heights in here, and then after this passes, because it's going to pass, okay, unfortunately, that would, that would allow, some of that verbiage would allow Pemberton Borough then to go back once the interconnection is made, and then start supplying the real Pemberton Heights potentially with water, and then all of a sudden, everybody over in Rato Village starts getting charged by the borough. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't want the borough's frickin' water, because it stinks like the high heaven of rotten eggs, and has so much iron in it, it's unbelievable. And I'm not, that's not a, that's not a, that's not a scare tactic. I lived in the borough, I grew up in the borough. All my clothes going to high school smelled like rotten eggs, was my parents' pipes by any means. It stinks. It's the sulfur in the water, that's right. My well at my house, I don't have any sulfur at all. Matter of fact, I don't even have an iron issue. And if I do have an iron issue, I call J W Jenkins, I have him come out and take care of my well. Man, it's that simple. It's been that simple for 58 years in this town.
So, Josh, if we have Joe add in there the language for latitude, latitude and longitude, that would correct that?
I would actually say Johnson Court would be better.
Yeah, I would too, Johnson Court would be better. But, but either way, Harry, I'm still not going to vote for it, but yeah, that would be, that would be my recommendation.
I'm trying to correct that problem.
Yeah, I, I would, I would definitely correct that problem, because otherwise, who, when we, when we're all gone, who's to say Pemberton Heights, oh, Pemberton Heights here, Pemberton Heights there?
Right.
Oh, let's shut this valve off, let's turn this valve on.
Yeah.
Now, again, I, I've been, I've been told this is my personal needs and my best interest, it's not, just so everybody knows.
Council President, may I make a couple comments on this? Just, and please, if anyone, if I misspeak, please correct me, because there's been a lot of stuff with the water that is confusing, it's complex. This is extending and changing an agreement that we already have with the borough. The borough is already supplying water to Johnson Court, Arnie's Mount Road, Wawa, VFW, or American Legion, excuse me, I don't know why I'm on that kick tonight, but they're already supplying water, and they've already committed to, I believe, Phase One and Phase Two of K-HOP. So that's already in place. I think the big thing is, the contract we have right now, we're paying the borough, and we write them a check every quarter for, for water, as we approve it, I believe we're actually losing money on it, because they're charging us more per month than what we're charging our residents. This new agreement fixes that so that we're making a couple pennies on every gallon or whatever it is, so we're not losing money anymore. And it does give us the availability to negotiate with them for the expansion of the other homes in K-HOP. We did have a five-year agreement, I believe this kicks it out to a 20-year agreement. So, this, this old agreement was going to end in 2031, I believe it was, so now it's going to go out to 20 years from now. So, it does clean up some of the problems that we have in, in-house right now with the water agreement. We're not really doing anything extra or providing any new services, because it's already in place. We're just getting it at a better rate and cleaning up the agreement between the borough and us. Does, does that help at all?
Not really, not with me. If, if the borough's supplying Johnson Court, it's their water, is that correct?
Yeah.
How are you going to get our water to Johnson Court?
We don't have water going to Johnson Court.
I know that.
There's no way to get water to them.
But I thought that the purpose was this, for the township to supply Johnson Court with the water?
Yeah.
No, we're not supplying them. The only way, Dan, that we could get water to them possible, there's two possible ways, would be going through the old prison property back here and across, and pine lands is never, first off, it's cost-prohibited, and the pine lands will never approve it to happen, so you can't go that route. The other route would be possibly to go from Lafayette Pump Station in Lake Valley down 616 and come into the borough by Dunkin' Donuts, but the borough's already stated that they will not let any external water source to come into their system, so that's not a player. So there's no way for the township to bring water into Johnson Court.
All right, well, let's go back a couple years.
I wasn't in office a couple years ago.
Yeah, you were. You've been here three years, and your, your sidekick over there lied to us when they put city water in Rato Village. Is that correct, Josh?
Um, I have the ordinance right here ready to go, but I'll be talking about that later.
So, we were lied to on this council by him, and he's not here anymore. He says, "Oh, we just want to supply city water to the people in Rato Village," and the question's where, where they all have wells? But it was piece, but he was, what he was doing was piecing his water design to get to Greenberg's. So the bottom line is, the taxpayers paid for Rato water, and everybody's got a well.
I thought that went through the water utility, and the water utility's paying that, because they also ran it down Scrapetown Road...
Well, if they're paying for it, we're paying for it.
Scrapetown Road...
And First Avenue.
Which, which would potentially go all, I mean, I'm going to bring it up later on, if everybody wants to wait and hear the story. Okay, I'll bring it up later on.
But see, their plan was Pemberton Brownsville's Road, down the bypass, Coleman Bridge, get the Magnolia Road, make a right-hand turn, tie the water into Whispering Pines, go to the other end of the development...
Oak Pines.
Oak Pines, whatever, tie it in there, tide into Rato Village, through Lake Valley, down Pemberton Vincent Town Road to the, the Dunkin' Donuts. But in the meantime, the taxpayers paid to have water mains put in Rato Village, and it should have never happened.
I think I stopped the handout, Danny, from the map. I, I think I stopped the, the map handout that he gave me, yeah?
So, you know, we're gun-shy because we're used to being lied to, is the bottom line. And he sat right there and says, "Oh, we want to supply city water to Rato Village." Well, how you, how, how can you possibly make people that have wells to hook up to your city water, especially if somebody just had a brand-new well put in two years prior?
Dan, you've heard me go up to the microphone as a resident saying I had a private well that I didn't want to get on city water. I have city water right in front of my house, and I still have my private well that I use.
You know...
So you're not saying anything I haven't said, and I'm still saying it. I'm going to use my well until the thing dies.
You know, there's just too much wasteful spending in this town for the amount of money that we bring in, and it's just, it's mind-boggling.
All right, do we have a motion?
Uh, first, Joe, we, we can make that correction on that wording for that area, right?
Yeah, it's not a substantial change.
Okay, all right. Yeah, if, if that's a minor thing, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve 324, 2025. I mean, we're just extending an agreement and...
I can't hear you.
So we're just extending an agreement that we already had with the borough, and we're, uh, you know, correcting the language that, you know, was put in there wrong.
I'll second it.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes.
Resolution 325, 2025, awards contract to Limmo Associates for the revitalization of Blueberry Manor Park and drainage improvements in a total amount of $49,638.
Again, I, I had this one pulled, and not that I, you know, I, I got really nervous about the pricing of it and all, but after talking to some people and further investigations, the, you know, it's a good thing, having this engineering done for this park, but it wouldn't have been this costly if, and I've said this before, when we take a park out, don't take it out before we have a plan to put it back in, because if we'd have replaced this park in kind at the time it was done, it would not, half of this engineering wouldn't have to be done. But because it's been four or five years since it was taken out, you know...
Harry, if you have unsafe playground equipment, you got kids playing on it, you got liability there.
But that's, I, I don't disagree with that, but we need to always be making plans ahead of time, we, you, you can't just take it out and then decide five years later what to do with it. You know, like I said, a lot of this engineering, if you were replacing in kind, you wouldn't need the pine lands permits and stuff like that, but because it's set for so many years, that's why we need this extra engineering. I mean, we have a $100,000 grant to go towards this, I believe there are some other funds coming from another source that will be going towards this, so it's covered, you know? I just wanted to bring that out to people, let, let them know, I mean, we have another park, Pole Bridge Park, that was another one was taken out.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been now three years, and that was in this year's budget to be put in, but we need to do this stuff in a timely manner to make it as cheap as possible, you know, we, we want the residents and their kids to have parks to play in and stuff, but we don't want to increase the cost because we take so long to get it done. And if nobody else has anything to say about it with that, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes.
Ordinance number 30, 2025, bond ordinance providing for various 2025...
311?
Um, ordinance number 30, 2025, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 water utility improvements by and in the township of Pemberton in the county of Burlington, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,638,855, therefore, authorizing the issuance of $1,556,913, $513 bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
So here's my comment on ordinance number 30, 2025, before it gets introduced. Message dated, and I'll, I'm going to leave this as anonymous as I possibly can. Message dated 11/12/2025. I've been waiting weeks for an email regarding the water bond ordinance, email never received. We have restructured the water bond ordinance to meet capital your needs, yet you are still against it. I texted you Monday, 10 November, asking what your concerns are after we amended the ordinance, no response. You are obviously disengaged from your role as councilman. You were elected to represent the people of the township, but you only look out for your best interests. I recommend you immediately resign from your position, as you add no value to this governing body, our residents deserve better. Now, let me tell you something. Number one, I don't think I live in New York City yet. I have the right to my opinion, and again, I have the right to represent my constituents. I won't, I won't dwell on this again, but my question to my fellow council members is really simple. Can anybody recite ordinance 5, 2024 for me? Because this is where it all started. Anybody? No? Maybe you should look it up. Ordinance 2025, like Jack just said, if my well goes dry, anybody in Pemberton Township, if your well goes dry, and me and Danny were forced into this, if your well goes dry, you are then, if you're within 200 feet of a water main, you are forced to hook up to that water main, no questions asked. Now, everybody in Presidential Lakes doesn't have to worry about that, because you'll never see water down there. Nobody around the lake that has water mains doesn't have to worry about that. We do. Hold on, I'm not done yet.
Okay, okay.
So I did a little investigating, because it's not just because of West End and what it said. Does anybody know on council how many active accounts in New Lisbon we actually have hooked up to the water system right now? Anybody know? Before we vote on this? Oh, wow. How about non-active? Planks, right? Out of 100%, I mean, I'm just going to leave it at, at its number, it's 24 active, and that's not including the county, the ballpark, and the pylons. There's 65 non-active water accounts. This is all public knowledge right on the website, everybody can get to it. Very, very simple. If you don't know, hell, call me, I'll show you, because I don't care. Apparently, I don't care. Okay, and we're talking about New Lisbon, we're not even talking about West End. Now, what you're going to wind up happening is, the ask on this ordinance is 15, 1 million, 1.5 million dollars, okay? So I did a little bit more math. Since you have 24 active accounts already hooked up, and let's say those other 65 accounts, their wells run dry, and then they're forced to hook up, right? 1.5 million minus $650,000 is $930,000 deficit after it's all said and done. That's how much we'll be on the hook for. $930,000. Somebody's going to pay that. Michelle, do you want to pay for that? Kenny, you want to pay for that? Anybody else want to pay for that? Mike, you want to pay for that? No, I don't think so, right? Okay, and if you think I'm lying, I'll show you all the, all the, all the paperwork that I have. I'm going to keep going here. This deficit, I guarantee you, and as Michelle said, will be made up by the water rate payers, or better yet, by hiking up water rates or tax rates in the township, just for 120 houses, which 75% of them have wells right now, and they're probably operational. I'm sure they're operational, I don't see anybody from Lisbon coming up here complaining about their water. Right? So we'll just force another 65 houses to, you know, to put on the water dependency. Just so everybody knows, the average cost nationally to drill a well 25 to 50 foot deep, as of right now, is about $35 to $5600. That's to draw a whole new well. That's not even just to replace your pump, which is nine times out of 10 what you need. Your wells don't collapse. Mike, your well collapsed? Oh, you're probably on city water, right? Yeah, my well's not going to collapse, right? Because I, I know how deep my well is, my well's actually 250 feet deep. I know that for a fact, okay? You got the shallower wells in the township that are about, what are they, anti-surface wells, what, 50 feet, 25 feet? Okay. So it's a third of the cost if we force people to hook up from 5, 2024, the ordinance that's here now, that me and Danny were basically Shanghai into approving after we denied it three times, and then the general, the B A that was sitting here goes, "Oh, please, 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 we need this, we need this, we need this, we need this. I don't need this crap, I don't think my constituents need this crap." So I'll tell you what, if you could fund the ordinance a different way, gentlemen, repeal 5, repeal this 5, 2024, and then I'll sit here and vote for ordinance 30, 2025, but I don't know where you're going to get the money. And then, just so everybody knows, the idea of sprawl, there's more than... And then, just so everybody knows, the idea of sprawl, there's more than, there's more than those ways to get over to the west side of town to get on the Hanover Street, just so you know, okay? The idea is to come down New Lisbon Road, back past the old packing plant, the Blueberry Packers, go down that road and connect in the Stockton Bridge. Very simple. They don't even have to come and deal with anybody else, you know why? Because you already have water mains going down there. Alls you gotta do is extend the water mains, it's already there. I'm a conspiracy theorist, though. All I care about is my own personal gains. Sure.
Do we have a motion?
And I'm not going to sit there and have backside deals at different places around the county or on cell phones, I'm not doing it. I won't email you, I'll have my conversations here.
All right, I guess I'll be the guy that jumps in, make a motion, we approve. I make a motion that we introduce ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty-five for first reading. What's the next date?
We're going to set the public hearing as the December seventeenth meeting.
All right, for a public hearing to be held on December seventeenth.
Do we have a second?
I didn't hear that.
I said, do we have a second?
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Doyle?
No.
Mr. Dewey?
No.
Council President, can I make a comment or two?
Yeah, go ahead.
Josh?
Don't address me. No, don't address me tonight.
I'm actually trying to help. You'll listen to what I'm saying. I believe in one conversation I had with Roe, you were talking about the ordinance mandate and hooking up the water.
I haven't talked to Roe in a year.
No, I'm saying, I talked to her. I believe in a conversation I had with her, she did say something about a law that makes that resolution or ordinance not valid, where we can't legally.
That's not true.
I don't know.
It's a state, the state of New Jersey mandated, the state Supreme Court of New Jersey allows for right to hook, you're forced, you can forcibly have your citizens hook up.
I could swear she said we couldn't do it. I was going to follow up with her, if that's something that might help. Josh, the way I remember it, we changed that where in Roto Village, it was, we stopped it from being mandatory hookup, and the only way you had to hook up is if you sold the house, you had to put the money in the escrow, or if your well went, you had to hook up.
That's correct.
But we did stop the mandatory hookup.
That's not how five, twenty-five, twenty-four reads, but.
But that's the way I remember it.
Okay, ordinance number thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, amending ordinance number twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, capital ordinance providing, capital ordinance providing for various general capital improvements by and in the county of Burlington, state of New Jersey, and increasing the appropriation by thirty-nine thousand dollars to four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, therefore, from grant funding and capital improvement fund of the township.
Discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve, introduce ordinance thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five for a second reading to be December seventeenth. December seventeenth for a second reading.
I'll second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes. Ordinance number thirty-two, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending the Spruce Boulevard Junction Road redevelopment plan to reflect the First Amendment to the Purchase, Sell and Redevelopment Agreement with GJB Development LLC and to remove block five eighty-six, lot one, from the redevelopment area.
Discussion, motion?
If I read that correctly, it sure sounds like the developer's telling us what we're going to do. No? About no more changes and this and that? This is, this is one where they have the property in the middle of Learning Way and T and M, I forget the name of the road there, but they have the townhouses in there, and part of the agreement was, the original agreement from before we got in office was, the township would sell them this lot and block, and they would subdivide it into four buildable lots to be conforming to existing houses in D and, in T and M. Selling them those properties, that company also agreed to do the park at Blueberry Manor. Well, as normal, there was a lot of confusion and misinformation in that regard, so we had to stop what we were doing, put the brakes on it. The applicant had to revise their plans, because they couldn't do the Blueberry Park portion of it because of stormwater management and something else. And there was some problems with the buildable lots on that property. If you remember right, a lot of people thought that we could have got a lot more money than what we were getting from them. So we determined that we were not going to sell them or give them that property. So that's why this is being withdrawn. We felt that we weren't getting the best deal on that, so we're pulling the property back, keeping it as a township property, and only dealing with the development of where the townhouses are. How, how many stories are the townhouses? Oh, I can't remember. This came to us when I first got into office. They talked to us, showed us the drawings, and they said they'd be back, and they came back last April. They were tied up in Pine Lands for two years. How many townhouses are they planning on building? Ninety-six, I think. So ninety-six, so we got to know if it's one story, two story, three. I believe it's two story, but I could be wrong.
He's right back there. The developer. Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Jerry Boldacino, I represent GJB Development, it's eighty-seven townhomes.
I didn't hear your name, can we repeat that?
Jerry Boldacino, GJB Development. Eighty-seven townhomes, they're two-story. Twelve affordables are going in the eighty-seven, so there's seventy-five market rate units, twelve affordables.
But they're only two stories.
They're two stories, yeah. Any other questions while I'm here?
Like you just saved from buying a fire truck.
Excuse me?
You just saved from buying a fire truck.
Oh. I didn't know that, but, okay.
If they were more than two stories, we don't have the equipment to put a fire.
Oh, all right.
Do we have a motion? Or any more discussion?
I guess I'll be the guy to introduce. I will introduce thirty-two dash twenty twenty-five for a second reading to be December seventeenth.
I'll second that.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
No.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes. Okay, new business purchases over three thousand. A one, Public Works, two well meters for well seven and twelve from USA Blue Book in a total amount of seven thousand one hundred and forty-two fifteen.
If there's no discussion or questions, make a motion to approve new business purchases, A one.
Second.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Ward? Mr. Bianchini?
Yes. A two, Public Works, main frame and front mounts for Alamo Shoulder mower from Cherry Valley Tractor Sales on a total amount of three thousand six hundred and fifty-six oh six.
Discussion?
If there's none, I'll approve A two as well.
Second.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes. Purchased over three thousand, A three, Police, Microsoft Office three sixty-five, GCC G three, from Premier Technologies, sixteen license from Premier Technology Solutions, the total amount of five thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve A three.
I'll second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes. A four, Police, additional lights for twenty twenty-one Dodge Durango. Durangos two from Elite Vehicle Solutions, the total amount of three thousand nine hundred and fifty-four sixty.
Council President, can I say a couple of words on this, just to clarify this purchase?
Go ahead.
This is for the chief and, I believe, the captain's Durangos. When they were outfitted, they have the lights in the front window, and they have the lights in the back window. And when they're going to a call, they turn on their lights like they're supposed to, and they come up to an intersection, and there's absolutely, positively no identifier on the side of the vehicle that they're a police, no lights, no nothing. So when they come up to an intersection and they try to respond to an emergency, without these lights, there's a high likelihood of being T-boned or some other kind of accident, so we're trying to correct that error, put lights on the sides of these vehicles so that they're easily identified when they're responding to a call. How many miles are on these cars, being it for twenty-ones? I don't believe it's very much.
Make a motion to approve A four.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes. A five, Recreation Senior Services, replacement warmer for senior center meals from Sam Tell and Sons, the total amount of four thousand four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents.
So my, my question, was this, was this a steam table unit? From what I, from what I see, Jack, I was, I was trying to look at, I can't tell if it's a.
I, I believe it is a steam table for keeping the food warm while they're preparing and serving the food to the seniors for the lunch meals. Yeah, I know, I said the same thing, apparently.
I mean, look, I'm just going to say, because everybody probably expects me to say, I mean, I'm just going to use my experience, I'm in restaurants, for, for, even a triple full-pan steam table, I wouldn't pay seven, I wouldn't pay four thousand four hundred dollars for it, and I know we have to do government contracts and all that BS, but I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars max for a brand-new one. Just me. I'll do it, though, because if we need it for the seniors, then we need it for the seniors, but it's just double what you should pay.
Does that ever they do state contract?
Probably, probably, but I don't know, I mean, Restaurant of Quippers, I mean, we can't, you know, for twenty-five hundred dollars, I mean, we paid what, what, Danny? Fifteen thousand dollars, I mean, almost to redo the Office of Emergency Management over there, three different charges, four different charges, five different charges. I mean, I'm sure you could put a twenty-five hundred dollar unit on the credit card, and you're below the three thousand dollar. It's just me.
Just a note, the paperwork does say it's not under state contract, they did receive three quotes.
Make a motion to approve A five.
Second motion.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
I guess.
Mr. Ward?
Easy come, easy go.
Sure, why not?
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes. New Business B, Special Use Permit authorizes winter wreath fundraiser by VSA Troop Twenty-Two G for the sale of winter wreaths at Kambie Bagels, December sixth and seventh, and thirteenth and fourteenth of twenty twenty-five.
I think, Matt, you and I talked about this, and I also talked with the scout, different scout leaders, and said we can't discriminate one scout group against, you know, against another. It's all for the benefit of the kids. And I think the scout groups said they would try to talk to each other and, you know, get their dates lined up. I see no reason not to approve special use permit.
Can I, can I ask a question? This is all on private property, I mean, it's Kambie.
It's an outdoor sale.
Still need to have a special use permit.
Really? That's why I'm asking, I don't know.
We tried to go that way too, Jack.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion to approve special.
Second that.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes. Approval by council required for payment of vouchers on bill list dated eleven, six, twenty twenty-five.
Discussion, questions?
Sorry to hold you there. Just a general question on our bill to our, just a general question on our bill to our, Labor Attorney, that's, that's the one I was looking for. I mean, we got an excessive amount of bills this month, I mean, I know, you know, we were doing some contract negotiations and stuff, but some of the notations, I, didn't understand the referencing. Jack, do you know VC versus Pemberton, what that's about?
Harry, it's not that I can't hear you, but when I listen to video, I only hear you.
Okay, I'm trying to talk up, sorry.
He's questioning what VC versus Pemberton is.
I, I don't, I don't know, but I, I don't know what it is.
Okay, and then the other one I don't want to mention, the employee's name was a reference to an employee, and I didn't know what, you know, the Labor Attorney would have to do with that one employee, but. Oh, okay, all right, Mr. Dewey may have answered that one for me. That's, that's all I had, like I said, just seemed excessively high. I went back a few months and we were not getting anything from him, and then all of a sudden, I guess he waited till this month to hit us with a bunch of them.
Well, we, and you're going to have more, I mean, we were in contract negotiations with Communications Workers of America.
Yeah, some of that, some of that's on here, yeah.
So we had that, and we've been negotiating and discussing the PBA contract, we're trying to get that. to get that done before it ends at the end of the year. And we've also been with the Government Workers, uh, Union, trying to negotiate with them. So we have been talking to the unions for a couple of months now, so you are going to see bills, uh, from the labor attorney, he's been a key part of it.
Yeah, like I said, a couple of them just stood out, you know, some I understood as labor, but some I didn't, you know, wanted a little better clarification, you know, but that's the only question I had.
Make a motion approve the bill list.
I'll second.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Joe, you got a report?
For the sake of brevity, there's nothing new to report in terms of, uh, anything from my end right now, uh, but I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Mayor's report?
Um, two things, like Joe said, I, I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving, be safe for that four-day weekend. You know, the thing is, I came into work this morning and overheard a conversation, and usually, this time of year, I kind of think it's finished with the deer running out in the, in the road in front of you. Uh, unfortunately, we still have deer running out in front of us. We had one of our police cars involved with the deer accident a couple nights ago, and unfortunately, it was one of our canine cars. And I saw the pictures of the front of the car, it took off the front driver's side corner.
Is the officer okay?
He's all, from what I understand, he's all right.
That's all right.
I'm sorry?
That's all about.
Yeah, but, but the car may be, unfortunately, I'm not an insurance adjuster, but it looked pretty bad, so it may be totaled. Um, and it, and again, it, it was one of our vehicles with the animal in it, so that's going to be an additional upfitting cost, possibly. But.
That wouldn't be covered through the insurance check?
Yeah, most, well, we would still have the $1,000 deductible or whatever it is.
Right.
But I just, I mean, the deer are out there when you're driving at night, like tonight, be careful.
But I'm saying, is it a newer vehicle? One of the newer ones? Yeah, well, sure, it should cover it.
Got all? All right. More adjourned? Go ahead, Harry.
Make a motion adjourned.
Are you doing the next meeting, or is Chris doing it?
I don't know, uh, Chris was in Florida.